Regular meeting of the Enfield Town Council to order. We begin with a public hearing, Chapter 22, Article 2, Cultural Arts. A public hearing has been scheduled to allow interested citizens an opportunity to express their opinions regarding the proposed amendments to the Town Code of Enfield, Chapter 22, Article 2, Cultural Arts Commission. May we have roll call, please?
Councilman Bosco. Councilman Sikala.
Here.
Councilman Denny.
Here.
Councilman Edgar.
Here.
Councilman Hall.
Here.
Mayor Copen.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Lee.
Councilman Mangini.
Here.
Councilman Stokes.
Here.
Councilman Suzak.
Here.
Excuse me? Eight members present, and now Councilman Lee has just arrived. We have nine members present, and two are absent.
The following notice of public hearing was published in the Hartford Current Friday, October 10, 2014. Town of Enfield legal notice, public hearing. The Enfield Town Council will hold a public hearing in the Enfield Town Hall, Council Chamber, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, on Monday, October 20, 2014, at 6:50 p.m. to allow interested citizens an opportunity to express their opinions regarding the proposed amendments to the Town Code of Enfield, Chapter 22, Article 2, Cultural Arts Commission. Ground rules for the public hearing are as follows. There is no time limit, but I ask that each person not take up too much time so that everyone will have an opportunity to speak. After each person who desires has had one chance to speak, I shall permit those individuals who desire a second chance. After those individuals who desire to speak a second time, I shall permit those individuals who desire a third, fourth, et cetera, time. And finally, we ask that you please refrain from the use of personalities. Matt, do you have any information that you'd like to offer to frame this public hearing?
Yes, sir. I have a very brief outline of what the changes to the Chapter 22, Article 2, Cultural Arts Commission. First, the changes would expand the membership of the commission from the current seven members to 11 members. And the thought behind this is to allow for a broader diversity, as well as more ideas to enter into the discussion for cultural arts within the town of Enfield. Second major change to this is this would allow a membership to be offered to those individuals that are not citizens of the town of Enfield, but represent a business that is a citizen, corporate citizen, of the town of Enfield. And the thinking behind that, of course, is that we have some very great companies within the town of Enfield that their ideas, their abilities to help provide resources would be very beneficial, again, to the goal of providing a robust cultural experience within the town of Enfield. And the last major change is the charge of this commission. I think now the proposed change would reflect, again, diversity and a broader interpretation of cultural arts within the town of Enfield, reflecting the heritage, as well as the many opportunities that exist within the people of the town of Enfield.
Great. Thank you, Matt. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding this public For the second time, anyone in the audience? And the third? Sensing none, I will declare this public hearing closed, and we will move back to our regular meeting. And I would ask everyone in the audience to please stand for a prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear Lord, with the month of October being both Breast Cancer Awareness Month and Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we share this prayer. We pray for those with breast cancer, as well as their families. May your healing power touch their bodies, and your grace comfort and lift their spirits. May we also see a cure for all cancer in our lifetime. We also pray for those who have and are facing domestic abuse. Protect them with your strength and guide them to the loving hands of the people who work daily to stop this terrible abuse. May they know that no one deserves the pain of emotional or physical abuse. Some wear pink for breast cancer awareness, and some wear purple to bring attention to the need to stop domestic abuse. But whether pink or purple, we all stand together in asking you for hope, comfort, and strength for all who suffer. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And may we have roll call, please?
Mayor Copen.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Lee.
Here.
Councilman Mangini.
Here.
Councilman Stokes.
Here.
Councilman Suzak.
Here.
Councilman Arnone.
Councilman Bosco.
Here.
Councilman Sikala.
Here.
Councilman Denny.
Here.
Councilman Edgar.
Here.
Councilman Hall.
Here.
There's 10 members present, one is absent.
And just a note from Councilman Arnone. One of his uncles passed away, and tonight is the wake for his uncle, Michael Arnone. And he expresses his regrets for not being here, but as he should, he should be with family. The fire evacuation announcement. In the event that the fire alarm sounds here at Town Hall, we remind our audience that everyone must evacuate the building. Closest exit would be to the rear of Council Chambers and out to the front of Town Hall. But if you choose to take the side door to your right, which is our left, we then ask that you take the back set of stairs to the back parking lot of Town Hall. Minutes of the preceding meetings, we have two. First would be the special meeting of October 6, 2014, by Councilman Mangini. Seconded by Councilman Hall. Discussion. Sensing none, by show of hands, all those in favor? Those opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous? And the regular meeting of October 6, 2014, by Councilman Mangini. Seconded by Councilman Denny. Discussion. Sensing none, then by show of hands, all those in favor? Those opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention, Councilman Stokes. Next item on our agenda is our special guest section, and I'd like to call forward Carol Bonet, President and CEO of Allied Community Services and your crew. Please invite everyone up if council could stand but stay behind the dais. And we have a proclamation to present to Allied. And the council's very happy to have you here as our guests, and to recognize your 50th anniversary of serving not only Enfield, but the greater Enfield community in north central Connecticut. We have a proclamation to present, and then I'm going to turn the microphone over to you, Carol. You can introduce the folks here and give us information on Allied and how you've been celebrating your 50th anniversary, and any other good stuff you want to pass on. All right?
Does it have to be brief?
No, you don't have to be brief. Once you get the microphone, it is yours. All right. Because you can see the proclamation isn't all that brief, because you've done remarkable work in the community. So we have a proclamation honoring Allied Community Services' 50th anniversary, whereas October 20, and that's today, 2014, marks the 50th anniversary of the incorporation of the agency that has evolved into Allied Community Services. And whereas in the early 1960s, a group of parents of children with developmental disabilities formed a steering committee to explore setting up organized day programs. And whereas the original group included Albert D. Alessandro, Ray Flaherty, Claire Ledoux, June Curtanis, Eve Samani, and Don Spencer, and they were supported by family members, special education teachers, and friends. And whereas the steering committee members were dedicated and persistent advocates for giving their children the right, like all others within the community, to education, day activities, vocational training, employment, housing, and socialization. And whereas on October 20, 1964, the steering committee officially incorporated as the, quote, "Enfield Association for Retarded Children Incorporated," Enfield Arc. And whereas approximately 35 children enrolled in Enfield schools were the first participants, and the organization's geographic area quickly grew to encompass eight towns in north central Connecticut. And whereas today, Allied Community Services in Enfield is the parent corporation for the allied group of agencies, a human services organization that includes subsidiaries, allied community resources, and allied rehabilitation centers. Allied employs some 222 professional staff members. And whereas as a private provider for the Connecticut Department of Developmental Disabilities, our allied rehabilitation center subsidiary in Enfield serves 185 participants with intellectual and developmental disabilities in 17 north central Connecticut towns. While the allied community resources subsidiary in East Windsor makes it possible for more than 4,000 seniors and individuals with disabilities throughout the state of Connecticut and in parts of Alabama to stay in their own homes and their communities with assistance from Medicare waiver, home care, and pilot programs. Now therefore, I, Scott Copen, Mayor of the town of Enfield, on behalf of the Town Council, the Town Administration, and the entire community, hereby congratulate Allied Community Services as they celebrate their 50th anniversary of providing individuals with disabilities or other challenges the opportunity to live and enjoy a productive, independent, and fulfilling lives, vital human service programs, and, quote, "creating opportunities for people." Signed today, October 20, 2014, on the 50th anniversary of your founding, as a community, we congratulate for all the great work that you do here in Enfield and throughout north central Connecticut and the United States. Carol, congratulations.
Thank you, Scott. That's wonderful. And I want to thank the town of Enfield, the council members, the town staff that are here, all the community members, and the business community in Enfield for support in Allied. We have here many representatives of Allied, individuals that are staff at Allied, people that participate in our programs, Maryam and Jo. We have board members here, our chairman of the board, Frank Santi, and board members Jim O'Donnell and Richard Jabis. I know I messed up your name. So we're all very excited to have this proclamation. And I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything. Frank?
Frank? Well, just very, very quickly. Very, very quickly. You know, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, council members, friends. We look forward, it's been a great partnership, a great partnership with the town of Enfield and Allied over many, many years, and we look forward to that partnership for many, many years to come. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Mike's got something. Right?
I just brought a banner.
So this is Mike Helletu. Mike's brought a banner.
Celebrating 50 years.
50 years of service in our community. Thank you to all of you that are here up here, in the audience as well. We really appreciate all the work and the opportunities that you offer throughout our community. Thank you so much. If there's anyone in the audience wishing to address the council, I ask that you please raise your hand. I'll call on you. Come forward. Raise your bottle of water. Come forward to the front table. Please state your name and address for the record. Please keep your comments to no more than five minutes. I do time you. And since Liz raised her water bottle, she'll be first. And we ask that you please refrain from the use of personalities. Welcome, Liz.
Thank you, thank you. And Mr. Kibbe.
Oh, is this a...
We're a dual team.
We're a dual team this evening. My name is Elizabeth Davis, and I reside at 201 North Maple Street. And this is...
Kevin Kibbe at 47 is Nuntuck Street.
So, good evening.
Good evening.
As you all are very well aware, our community interacts on social media. Our community events are always so positive and uplifting. However, online is a different story. It's sad that someone can sit behind their computer, insult their neighbor, and not even think twice about it. They are hiding behind their words ominously. Adult bullying is more common than many want to admit. Cyberbullying allows cruelty of all ages to play out 24/7. We teach our kids to be kind online, what goes online stays online, respect each other always online or off. Maybe we need to start teaching this to the adults. We are our children's role models. Freedom of speech is an important issue, and it is vital that we protect that freedom. We have the right to say a lot of things in the great USA, but we don't have the right to threaten, harass, intimidate, or otherwise mistreat someone. In order to stop cyberbullying, we want to partner with you, the town, hoping you guys will help us, so that we can develop a program and bring in speakers to raise awareness about adult cyberbullying. After all, our children are watching and learning from us. We are their role models. So we come in front of you guys, hoping that with the town, that we can get some help to bring awareness and educate the residents and parents in our town somehow, some way, so we can be the right role models for all children, not just our own, but for everybody's kids to follow. Do you have anything, Matt?
No, other than it, we're just trying to do it exactly what Elizabeth said, bring some awareness to this, because it happens a lot more frequently than some may know. Some may realize how often it happens, probably a lot of folks don't, but it is a very, you know, it's a big issue, and it needs to be addressed before it gets out of control any more than it already is.
Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Public Communications.
Jack Sheridan, 7 Buchanan Road. Thank you, guys, for having the great job done on the South Maple Street. You fixed the sinkhole, fixed the road. Well, you know, I'm here quickly to show you things that need to be fixed or complained, but I'd like to come and tell you that I appreciate the work that was done on that road, and I go down it all the time. And I recently got a new front end alignment, and I hope it lasts a while. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Public Communications. Anyone else? Thank you very much. We'll move to Councilman Communications and Petitions. Councilman Mangini.
Just a couple of comments. I wanted to compliment the Jack-o'-lantern festival judges. We had Greg and Donna, and I know the kids had a great time, and I think the parents, and Gina was there, and Liz was there, and I was there. It was wonderful, and I really want to see that activity continue. I know they're looking for corporate sponsorships, and I think that that's something that we need to explore as a community, if any company wants to come forward, or groups of people to help fund, because it does cost money to put these events on, and it is for the kids, and the kids have a great time. And anything we can do for our children to keep them happy and safe is something we need to focus on. So I wanted to say that. To our, through our mayor, to our town manager, Matt, the Donna Street Speed Radar machine, any idea when that might be available for Donna Street? I know I've seen it on Southwood. I don't know how many there are in existence and how often they're transported around town, but could we maybe find out where it is? Because Donna Street's really very bad when it comes to the speeders. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Cindy. Councilman Denny?
The plaque ceremony went off without a hitch yesterday on the mall. I want to thank Buildings and Grounds again for doing a nice job of installing it. I have some questions for the town manager, and I guess Public Works. Manholes on Brainerd Road, Brainerd School, I've got some complaints about that. I understand there's not a fence totally around the building, and I don't know what the issue is, but people are calling me and want to know what's going on with Brainerd School. Excuse me, it's been sitting there for quite a long time. And I got an email about voting locations. I understand, I brought that up again, and it seems that the voting locations will not be changing from the gymnasiums, and I'm a little upset, but that's all.
Thank you. Thank you. Ed, Councilman Communications. Councilman Hall.
Just really one quick item. I think we all got Chris Gumo's email today. Literacy volunteers are having their first annual Girls Night Out fundraiser. It's coming October 29. It is being held at the Holiday Inn, and it's from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. The event has a variety of interactive exhibits related to women's health, beauty, fashion, food, and more. Advance tickets are available through their website, which is www.evenbright.com, and it's spelt E-V-N, bright is spelt B-R-I-T-E dot com. And the tickets will be available at the door, but they'll be $5 extra. So if you want to purchase them in advance, it's only $20 pre-ordered, and it should be a really fun night. Starts at 6:00 p.m. to 9:00, and again, it's for literacy volunteers of northern Connecticut. So hope to see everybody there for that. Great, let's make it a good first fundraiser for them. So that's all I have.
Thanks, Carol. Councilman Edgar?
Not to say things again, but I'd like to go on record as being opposed to the voting place changes to the rear and the gym in Enfield Street and the one on Brainerd School. I think that it really prevents the older people or the handicapped people from getting in to vote. Any excuses you can take an absentee ballot, to me, is not valid. I've been going there for 60-some years, and I don't want to stop. On the Brainerd Road issue, not to be redundant, Ed, but I went down there Friday night. Nothing at all has been done. You're still bumping down there on those, they're at least an inch low as you go through. And through the mayor, to the manager, I asked you about lighting from the center of town to High Street along Pearl, if something could be done to brighten that up. I know you're busy, but I'd like some kind of answer. But when you drive down there, as we go through there, as you come up by the little store of Diana's, it's so dark, you just don't see people ahead of you, even on the sidewalk. So we need something done on the lighting down there.
Thank you, Red. Councilman Communications. Deputy Mayor Lee.
Another great event to add to the calendar for this weekend. I don't know, Mary, if you or Sam care to offer any comment on it, but I'll talk about it. This weekend is the second annual art show and art sale that's being sponsored by Tobacco Valley Artists, with a lot of support and production assistance from the Enfield Cultural Arts Commission. It is going to be at Center Square, in the Enfield Square, Center Court, rather, and it starts Saturday morning, 10:00 a.m. And there are over 30, over 30, how do you do that? Over 30 artists represented this year. So it's in its second year, and it's already over-doubled in size. So it's a great opportunity to come out and see the works and meet the artists of a couple dozen, multiple dozen of our local artisans and craftspeople. There is a reception planned Saturday morning at 11:00 a.m. Again, that's right outside of Macy's in the Enfield Square, and it runs until Sunday night at 6:00. So I wish them the best of luck and have throngs of people enjoying that event. I did want to, I guess this is a question to Matt. Are you prepared to speak tonight on the voting polling place issues at Enfield Street under your report?
I can, based upon what I know, yes.
If you could, that'd be great. Thank you. I'm all set, Scott.
Any further Councilman Communications? I have just a couple. First of all, want to thank the folks, the residents and businesses from Thompsonville that came out back on Tuesday, October 7, for the Thompsonville Talk Forum that Courtney Hendrickson and staff led. Great attendance. We were out in the hallway. And another Thompsonville Talk Forum to be held in January. Great dialogue, good Q&amp;A session, and just appreciate everyone coming out and supporting that initiative. I was away this past weekend, but I heard raves about the Jack-o'-lantern festival, so thanks to all that went there. Posted pictures on Facebook, so while I was away, I could see the jack-o'-lanterns and the videos of the kids dancing to Michael Jackson. What is this? Thriller? Is it, is this a thriller?
Actually, me and Cindy did that together.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, you were supposed to say anything.
It was, no, well, we didn't like...
That would have been a thriller.
When she was, never mind, I'm not going to...
Could I just... I started something I am not going to finish. Can I just ask, the mayor was about to do it. Could you show us exactly what you were going to do there?
I was about to do what?
I know, thriller is...
No, not me. No, I...
That was after we did the limbo.
So, but to the folks, the folks that organized that, and I know they have a struggle every year raising funds, but it's a great event. And unfortunately, it gets put into perspective, too, where what they emulated is Keene, New Hampshire, and the problems that Keene, New Hampshire had. And it's just great to see the Enfield event stay local and focused on the kids, as it should be. This coming weekend, you know, earlier we heard about Allied's 50th anniversary. Well, the Knights of Columbus is celebrating their 125th anniversary, and they're having an event this Sunday at the KFC Hall. But just congratulations to those folks. Be presenting a proclamation from the town as well, to thank them for their service to Enfield. On Wednesday, October 29, and again, this is coming out of Development Services and the Business Education Forum, and it's a Business Education Forum Career Convention, Wednesday, October 29, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the Enrico Fermi High School gym and probably hallways and entryway, and the idea is to have the high school... School gym, and probably hallways and entryway. And the idea is to have the high school students from both Fermi and Enfield come on over to this career convention, meet with local businesses, both large and small, and start to understand what employment is like, what jobs are out there, what fields are out there, what skills are needed to prepare a student for eventually, for the workforce. And this has been a long time coming. It's been discussed both with the school system, the town, and some of our local businesses. So, hopefully, it's well-attended by the students and local businesses. Career Convention, Wednesday, October 29th. Halloween's coming up. It's a Friday. Be careful out there. Watch out for the kids that are going trick-or-treating. That's Friday, October 31st is Halloween, but Enfield is having a Fall Oween Festival on Saturday, November 1st, from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. I want to make sure I get the times right. I'm sorry, it's 11 to 4:00. 11 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. in downtown Thompsonville, along North Main Street and the pond. So, look for information on the town's website, but there'll be a lot of fun events for kids as well as adults down in Thompsonville for the Fall Oween Festival. And our, just a note to people who know firsthand that our council meetings are the first and third Mondays of the month. Well, we go into November, and because of Election Day being the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November, the council meeting actually reverts to the second Monday of the month. So, in November, the council will meet the second Monday and the third Monday. So, that will be November 10th is the next council meeting. And finally.
Scott? Just for the Fall Oween Fest?
Yes.
Around 5:30 after the festival, there's going to be a movie on the Higgins Green, a Halloween movie for families to come, put down a blanket, have some food from the food trucks, and watch the movie. So, that's a family event at 5:30 on an outdoor screen at the Higgins Green.
Awesome. Great. What's the movie?
It's a Halloween, it's a Halloween-themed movie.
It's not, is it like, something like Freddy Krueger?
No, 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 no.
Just checking.
Veterans Day is the time.
Veterans Day is actually the 11th, the official day. Oh, yeah, and that's right. And the Veterans Day Parade is Sunday, November 9th, at 1 o'clock, along the normal parade route, from Our Lady of the Angels down to Town Hall with a ceremony led by the Enfield Veterans Council. And my last comment is to Liz and to Kevin, thank you very much for coming up and talking about cyberbullying. I'm sure with your active involvement on Facebook, and I know firsthand Kevin has been a recipient of cyberbullying. I know I've been a recipient of cyberbullying, but I take that kind of in stride because of the position I hold. But some people are very nasty behind a keyboard, and they probably wouldn't say it to your face, but they feel that they have the right to type whatever they wish and send you emails, or send you Facebook postings, or talk to you, or talk about you on a Facebook posting. And it really has gotten out of hand over the last couple of years. Something is, that's designed as social media, should be accentuating the positive in being an information source, often becomes an arena for adults to bully other adults, which is pretty sad, and you see it all the time. And what I'll do, we'll have a conversation council-wise. What I thought of first is, we do have the Suicide Prevention Steering Committee that has been dealing with bullying issues within the school system. So, the group is much larger than suicide prevention. It addresses a lot of, you know, the socialization issues that we have within the school system, and it's starting to branch out. And it might be a topic that, that forum, that group, which is now breaking down into, say, subcommittees, to really start to emphasize specific work in, say, the training area, in the community outreach area, within the schools, improving school climate area. It might be something that would be appropriate for that group. So, at a minimum, I can take it to that group, and would love to hear your feedback, as well as to where you see a role for the town in a little more detail than your comments this evening. But wanted to thank you for coming out and pointing out that, you know, it is an issue, and I think it drives people away from what should be a good source of information, because you just don't want to deal with the stuff that people post out there. So, I had other words in my mind, but I kept it to the stuff. So, but thank you. And Jack, it is really nice to drive down South Maple Street, and a lot of our roads. And really, last comment to the residents, please be patient. October and November are prime paving time because of the temperatures. It goes down better. So, like today, there was an operation on South Road where, you know, people are driving on it quickly thereafter. We know, you know, the milling was done ahead of time for a reason. We're not going to forget the roads. We're getting to them. It's all going according to plan. And geez, except for the couple of manhole cover issues that are still out there, it's really nice to drive on a nice, flat road.
Slowly.
Slowly.
Yeah.
We're painting those lines and hopefully narrowing down the streets a little. So, anyone else? Any other further Councilman Communications? Then we will go to the town manager's report and communications. Matt?
Good evening. I have nothing tonight. Just kidding. First off, we have representatives from DPW here. I see a secondary hand motioning them forward. Are we going to talk a little bit about roads?
Yes.
An update, I believe?
Yep.
Okay. Brief, right?
All right, good evening, everyone. I'm going to talk briefly about the status of our 2014 construction season. Currently, we have approximately $15.5 million worth of projects on the street right now, encompassing 34 miles of town roads. Out of the 15 and a half million, $9 million has gone to reconstruction projects, which address six miles of town roads, and 6 and a half million is part of the pavement preservation program, which addresses 28 miles of town roads. Raffia East, which is known as Section 2D, is one and a half miles of reconstruction, which the streets are Play Road, Cora, Sky, and Sun Street. Those are completed, and some minor things on the punch list. Thompsonville West, which is Section 1G, is approximately 1.2 miles of reconstruction, and those streets are Cottage Green, Keller Ave, Thompson Court, Martin, Northwood Prospect, Tariff, and West Street. This project is completed, except for driveway aprons on Cottage Green and some punch list items. Thompsonville South, which is Section 1F, is 1.6 miles of reconstruction, which consists of Claremont Avenue, Edward and Gorman Avenue, Garden, Harris, John, and Keller Court, Meadow, Mountain View, New King Roseland, and Woodward Avenue. Woodward Avenue, Harris, Mountain View, John, and Edward will be completed this year in its entirety, and right now, we are working towards getting the drainage done on Edward, Claremont, Meadow, and Roseland. This project will be scheduled to be completed in June 30th of 2015. Road reconstruction 2014 is a one and a half mile reconstruction project, consistent of Ridge Road, Rocket Run, Bond, Kimberly, and Eileen Street. The aprons on Ridge Road, that's the only thing remaining there, it's been paved. We are paving binder, weather permitting this week, on Rocket Run. Bond Street is complete, except for the driveway aprons and the wearing course. Kimberly is 50% completed on drainage. Eileen Street, drainage is complete, and the rough grading is scheduled to be finished tomorrow with paving hopefully this week. And this project is still scheduled to be finished this year. Mullen Road, Culvert Crossing project, we are currently out to bid for this, the bids open up on November 19th, with the construction date of July, of August of 2015 of next year. And lastly, the 2014 pavement preservation program, which consists of the 48 street segments, and which equates to 28 miles. We are, 40 streets have been completed so far for paving, and we have eight left. Those eight left are a tiny bit on South, North Road, Moody Road, Taylor Court, Abbey Road, Hummingbird Lane, Stardust Drive, and Charlie Road. Those are the only things that are left for paving right now. This job is still scheduled to be completed by November 14th of this year. We're working on line striping, and there's just, there's a variety of things that are happening with multiple crews. We finished the loop detectors on all the streets that we had to, and we are currently really plowing forward, like Mayor Copeland said. We are really busy with paving right now. So, that is our current update.
Open for questions?
Sure.
Questions? Councilman Edgar?
There was a lady here at the last meeting about Sky Street. I think it was number six. There was a drainage problem. Has that been resolved?
No, that hasn't, but we have a meeting scheduled with her for Wednesday morning. So, we're going to meet her out on site Wednesday morning.
Further questions? Councilman Denny?
Manholes. I've been getting calls about manholes lower than the pavement. Brainerd Road especially, a couple on Cartier.
Okay. We, I think Counselor, I'm not sure which one, but Council brought the manhole issue to our attention the last meeting. We were not present for that meeting, and hopefully received a response to the list of questions that were posed that night. One of them, the first one on the list, was about the manholes on Brainerd Road. And first of all, our specification, which is a standard practice in paving, especially in road resurfacing projects, where you don't dig up everything and do a lot of extensive work to bring a manhole to grade up to the road elevation. The specification allows for anything less than one inch lower than the finished pavement. So, that means that anything that exceeds the one inch will be adjusted. Now, we know that there's, we're estimating roughly that there's about 1,000 manholes involved on the pavement preservation project, and so far, we know of maybe 10 to 20 of them that may be outside the specification. Unfortunately, there were some non-standard sizes out there, and in terms of manhole covers, and we've had to make basically a special order to get some of these, to get some of the manholes adjusted properly. But in most cases, we think that the manholes are within spec, but there may be a dozen or so, or 10 to 20 that are not in spec. They will be adjusted. I understand there's some impatience, or expectation that they would have been adjusted by now. The contractor's got a certain contract period. We don't feel that they're a real hazard to traffic, and as noted by the mayor previously, the concentration now is to get the pavement down before the weather gets too cold. So, we think that's the priority, is to get the pavement down, and the manholes will be addressed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Ed. Councilman Bosco?
If I could, real quick, you know, understand that with it being less than one inch, when a car does hit it, it will be noticed, but that doesn't mean that it's not within the specification. So, I think we need to appreciate that, that even, you know, again, less than, you know, probably a half inch will still register in most cars, that you're hitting something that's not even. But that's still within the specification that we have for that.
Mr. Mayor? If I could add, the reason for that one inch is that the rings, risers that are made for the manholes, they start at one inch. So, they don't make a half-inch riser, or three-quarter inch riser. So, that's basically the reason why the specification allows for up to an inch.
Councilman Bosco?
So, that means everything that you adjust is going to be patched now?
Some of the manholes, the lip, as I said, is about one inch. Some of the manholes that we have out there now are about half to three-quarters of an inch. So, we're going to take those out and put in the full thickness ones. So, those, that the manhole does, the manhole cover doesn't fit the frame. We're going to replace the cover to make it fit. So, we're not going to have to do any patching around it. The other ones, if we have to raise it up with an inch, we're just going to, that insert fits right inside of the current one that's already there.
Yeah, but then, what are you going to do about the gap all around where the blacktop meets to it? If it's, if you're paved tight to the catch basin, when you go to move them up and put the ring in, the ring's just not going to fit, because it's going to stick up an inch. Already, the whole goal's like this, so that means we have to patch all the roads, right?
I don't understand.
The ring's just not going to go there, because it's going to fall off. There won't be any sealing around the outside of the ring where it meets the blacktop.
The ring fits inside the manhole.
He's talking about the new ones.
No, it's not.
Edgar.
Yeah, I guess we don't see where there'll be that issue.
Yeah, we got a meeting in 27. I'd like to see how they're going to put them in without, without putting a patch around them. It just, if that's the case, it just seems like it's a shame that we're going to have to put a patch in a new road. When we do these roads, and we're talking a half inch, aren't we better off just shimmying them all? Because if the manhole is low as it is, aren't we going to get water infiltrating into the, you know, we're doing all this to get the fresh water out of the system, but the water must be able to run underneath the ring and go into the sewer. It's a big divot.
You know, I don't have a good answer to that. I know they're pretty tight. I don't, I think the amount of water infiltration would be minimal.
Sorry, we'll talk. Thanks, Joe. Deputy Mayor Lee?
Is that spec the same if there is a one-inch or greater rise above the manhole? I know there's a few places around some of the smaller streets where they're, they sit higher than the road. I can rattle off a few in an email tomorrow, but.
Okay, we'd like to know that, because the specification doesn't allow for them to be higher than the surrounding.
Okay, I'll get you a few. Thanks.
Thank you.
Now, Bill, those are roads that haven't been paved yet, right?
Yeah, these are.
They're orange?
Yeah, they're orange.
I've got a few in mind. I'll let you know.
Any questions, remaining questions for our folks from Public Works? Gentlemen, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
If that was okay to excuse them, Matt?
Okay.
Brief enough?
We're meeting. We'll talk later, though.
Anything else?
But there was, there was actually engineering going on in front of you.
Yes.
I'm passing around right now to you, a, this is an approved site plan, because what I'd like to speak to you about is a request that we received from the Ramblers. And as council should be aware, we've been partnering with the Ramblers. And as council should be aware, we've been partnering with the Ramblers to do a number of different things down at Enfield High School, as well as, I think, the Enfield High School football boosters, in terms of doing a number of different things to improve that area. But this particular request comes from the Ramblers and involves, so if you're looking at it, the football field and the track should be to your left. And so the top of the page is north. So on the western side to the north, the Ramblers are putting a practice field there. And that's actually where the old practice field used to be for the high school. And I believe also at one point in time, the graduations were done in that area as well. What they are doing is do, so they don't have to use the main turf at the football stadium, is to put lights in so they can practice, you know, for instance, tonight it's going to start getting dark, or has gotten dark, around six, six-thirty. And so this allows them to extend their practices later into the evening. And again, this is something that we went over with council, I think, way back when, when we first started this. But at the time, what the Ramblers had told us was they had it all set up for the poles, the lights, the connections and everything to go in from donated sources. So there really wasn't anything that we needed to do. The change that came in, and this actually was modified from when I spoke to leadership about this, what came in originally was that they weren't able to get all the light poles, utility poles necessary to put the lights on. And they are also requesting that we hook up those lights for them. Now, since last Wednesday, that was modified again. And all they're looking for now is us to relocate the light poles that are currently at JFK and relocate them to this site and install those. So a little bit different. The only investment that the town has to make in this is our labor and equipment costs to relocate those from JFK over to this area. And I know at leadership, there's a question about where those lights were going to go. And that's the point of what I just gave out to you is to show you what was approved by planning and zoning for that site to install it. I believe there are three, maybe four, poles over at JFK that we would have to remove, relocate over to the Enfield High School. Now, I don't have all the history because I was not here. But what has been recounted by a couple of different people to me is that those lights were one of the, or had been installed possibly for the Ramblers at that point. Again, I don't have all the history, so hopefully some of you may have more history than what I have on this. But right now, served no purpose for the middle school. The lights themselves are not hooked up and working. Maybe going back a little bit to my time horizon, when I first arrived, we had a slope issue deterioration. And that project has since restabilized that, but has taken away quite a bit of the room there. At the time, the Ramblers' practices were relocated from JFK to the Mount Carmel facility. And actually, council agreed to relocate the lights, or some of the light fixtures, from JFK to the Mount Carmel area to help facilitate that practice. So this would then be taking the rest of the poles, and I don't believe any of the light fixtures because they already have the light fixtures, the Ramblers do, from JFK down to Enfield High and install those.
And you're looking for a consensus to...
Yeah, typically, typically what we do when we're partnering with the, whether it's Enfield Little League or Thompsonville Little League or the soccer, when they are requesting some type of work to be done by the town, I run it by council first. Enfield, or excuse me, Thompsonville Little League, we actually spent money outside of our in-kind work with Enfield Little League. Again, we, I believe, spent a little bit of money, mostly in-kind work. And in this case, at this point, something's changed. It's only the in-kind of relocating the poles from JFK over to the site.
All right. Questions, comments? Councilman Mangini, Councilman Hall?
Thank you. Matt, thank you for the overview. I know that this is more of a public safety issue at this point. There are children, and I believe the ages are five to eight, that use that little field for flag football practice on Wednesday nights. And I know for a fact it gets very dark very fast. And they're like little bumblebees running around. If you can't grab one, the appropriate one at the right time, you're going to be out there with flashlights. So I would encourage council to support this opportunity to get that lighting over there because it is very important. Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy. Councilman Hall?
We were just trying to look up some history on the lights. The lights that are presently at JFK, were they, they're originally for the school and the Ramblers took advantage of them while they were using the field? Or was that something the Ramblers themselves put up?
Well, I don't believe it was just the Ramblers. I think there was some partnership with the town to do that. I don't think it was 100% Ramblers. I think the town participated. I don't think it served any purpose for the junior high. But again, I've heard differing stories, so...
And the second part of my question is, why did they stop practicing at JFK?
At the time, was, so this was about 2006, I believe, we had a slope deterioration. There's actually a slide that occurred and it took a good portion of the area where they were practicing in there. And so it was decided that there would be a safety issue to allow them because people were afraid that there may be additional deterioration that occurred, I guess.
But that's been fixed?
Yes, that has been fixed.
So is there a reason why they couldn't go back to JFK?
Well, I think we would be facing a similar issue where we'd have to install all the lights back up over there because, again, we took some of them away.
Okay. So how many lights do we move, Matt? And how many are they looking to have moved?
Well, at the site at Enfield High Football Stadium, one, two, three, four, five, six, they would be installing six new light fixtures.
Okay. And there's six at JFK we'd be taking?
No, no, it would just be, I want to say it's three or four of the poles is what would be relocated, not the fixtures themselves. To be honest, I don't know if the fixtures that are still there are even in working order. I know when we did relocate some of the fixtures over to Mount Carmel, there was a fairly, there was an expense to get those up and operational.
Okay. And we've already done, just, we've done in-kind work for the Ramblers in the past as well?
Yeah.
Just to, yeah.
Yeah.
Because we've helped them with their, yeah.
Yeah, there's, you know, a number of things that have already, whether it's for the Ramblers or for the Enfield High School or through the boosters for that, there's been quite a bit of in-kind work already being done there. And I think just, just maybe to go back to answer the question about, you know, why not go back to JFK, there was a desire by the Ramblers to, you know, keep everything in one area since they do play there. They thought the practice there would be, you know, just makes it more simple. Yeah.
Councilman Denny?
Yeah, I'll be supporting this as long as we keep in mind that we're going to help everybody else, the other leagues and so forth, and we have been in the past. And there was only a matter, I think there's four poles left down there that they never moved. And there's not, shouldn't be a big problem. If you want more details about the caving and all of that, I can let you know.
Remember it well?
I have the history, right?
Deputy Mayor Lee, then Councilman Sikala.
The lighting system that's installed there, that becomes usable by the Department of Athletics of the school system? Or is it strictly something that's going to be the responsibility of Ramblers?
Well, I think as with everything there, you know, it's all shared amongst the high school as well as the Ramblers. So again, I haven't had that specific conversation that I can recall. But I know in the past, everything that's been done over there has been shared amongst, you know, all the users.
Will that space be considered an asset that gets added to our rental and use policy?
Haven't thought that far. Typically, it probably wouldn't because, you know, most areas that we are, are, you know, for instance, if you had a choice between using that, the football field or that area because that area is not going to be the size necessary to play football, soccer, I mean, it's a limited area. So we wouldn't be using it from that standpoint. Most of the requests that come in through the facility use are for games, not practices.
I'm thinking of the cricket league that was inquiring a couple of years ago. I mean...
It's not big enough.
Not big enough? Okay.
I don't remember that at all. Cricket, really, wow.
All right. I'm good, thank you.
It's the field dimensions for cricket.
They're coming back.
Are they really?
They're sending an email which I'll forward to you. They want to bring cricket to Enfield. Councilman Sikala?
Just two quick questions. I don't necessarily have a problem with this. I just want to make sure we're not taking, we wouldn't be taking the lights away from anybody else who uses that area in JFK.
Correct.
That's not the case.
Yeah, they're currently are not functioning.
There's nobody else?
Right.
Okay. And would it have to be relocated again to a different area in the fields during the renovation and after all the renovations are being done? Are we going to put them in one spot and that's what they're saying?
Yeah. They're, you're talking about the renovations for the high school itself.
High school.
Yeah. Now, this area's not going to be impacted by that.
So where we're putting them is where they're going to stay?
Correct.
That's fine. I don't have a problem with it.
Thank you. Did I see Donna's hand, Councilman Suzak?
I think we moved the lights over to JFK from the, what used to be the Ramblers' field behind the Enfield Street School when we put head start in.
Yes, that's true.
So that's how they started moving around. And then they went to Mount Carmel and now, and they're not going to be stockpiling any dirt back there.
Correct. No, no, no.
Okay.
Yeah, the, that, the lay-down areas were actually moved up to the hill right behind the high school.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? So my sense is there's consensus to move forward?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
The old Brainerd School, the question came up about where that is. So staff has been working with that, mainly in the building department. They had started, and I don't have in my mind the exact time frames, but they had started demolition without getting a permit. The town interceded at that point, said, okay, you have to do a permit because there is hazardous materials. They have to do a report. The last time I had checked, we were still waiting for that report to be turned to us so they could be issued a demolition permit. I don't believe that permit has been issued yet. But I know that the fencing, at least from the roadside, there's fencing around, what appears to be around the building. But I'll have to check with building to see what's going on with that.
The school fence. I'm sorry. The school fence, when I finally looked at it, there is a fence in the front, but the only fence around it is the four-foot fence that was initially there from the school.
So in the back.
So they never, back end side, so we never put an eight-foot fence there.
Okay. And again, I'll check with the building department on that to get an update.
Thank you.
And polling locations, I forwarded to everybody just a little bit ago, actually, because I heard the beeps go off, the email that I received from one of the registrars, David War. And so, as I said, what I can speak about is, if I bring this up here, what I sent out to everyone there. And if it's okay, I'll just read what it says so the whole public can hear what it is. Again, it's to me from David War, copied Carol Senske. The town of Enfield has four election sites, one located within each council district. There was a change with one site at the beginning of 2014 because of construction schedules at the new high school. Enfield Street School was agreed upon by both registrars as the new District Two voting site. The town council concurred with the building change. The August Republican primary election was conducted at Enfield Street School in the gymnasium. The gymnasium is the most appropriate location to conduct voting with the modern scanner system. The gymnasium is strategically located with the quickest access to the building for the large elderly handicap slash handicap slash senior citizen population. The special handicap slash senior citizen slash elderly parking area adjacent to the side door of the gym does not require climbing stairs or using handicap ramps. The registrar's office recognizes the emphasis state law, state election law places on handicap access to buildings used for elections. Public Works has worked with the registrar's office to develop enhanced signage for elections, including signs designating temporary handicap parking areas adjacent to the voting sites. HAVA voting, another requirement of state law, occurs in the gymnasium. The gymnasium is set up for such voting. And again, just so we're all aware of that, that is the line that we have when someone is mainly blind, cannot read, they have to have access to be able to call and walk through the voting for that. Voting room design and many other state requirements are factored into the conducting of elections today. Significant change has occurred since optical scanners were mandated for use beginning in 2007. Registars, the state of Connecticut, election officials review annual changes to state statutes mandated by the state legislature with respect to election laws and implement such changes as prescribed. Thanks for your interest, Dave. Just to let you know, Dave is out of town for his business. I had asked if he would be able to make it tonight to have this dialogue. He was not able, again, because of his business. So I'd ask him to at least put into writing what his rationale was for keeping the voting where it's at, primarily at the Enfield Street Elementary.
Questions for Matt on this issue? Comments? So, go ahead, Cindy.
I do, thank you, Matt, for forwarding the email. But I have to agree with Councilman Edgar and Denny. And I understand the content of Mr. War's explanation, but I still don't understand how that is going to alleviate and also encourage both the handicap citizens and those that have visual issues. It's the actual location that is of concern. Why did they change it to begin with, I think is my real question.
Would change from Enfield High School to Enfield Street Elementary?
The all-purpose rooms.
The all-purpose rooms is the gist of the issue here.
Right. Well, again, if I can pull this back up, what, totally lost it here. What he says in the letter... Give me one second.
He's saying the gymnasium is most appropriate, but it's the all-purpose room that appears to be the most viable. So...
Well, so let me, let me jump in, just because Deputy Mayor Lee did a sidebar with me. And what he's being told is Educational Resources for Children has a lease. It includes the all-purpose room. And they operate on Election Day even though the schools are closed. So they're trying to accommodate leases that the council has approved in room use. So that's why the all-purpose room, the multipurpose room, you know, is quote, "off limits" because we've got a lease for another use at the same time.
That's not stated in here, so thank you for that explanation. But that's where I was confused.
There's other, I mean, that is, that is one of the considerations that has went into this, I believe. But again, kind of reading in between this and based upon my conversations with David, what he's saying is that the gymnasium is set up for that from the size perspective, the way that they want to be able to funnel people in for registering then to the election and out. It's a larger size and more appropriate, plus it has the HAVA lines already installed in there as well. It's, it's a larger size and more appropriate, plus it has the HAVA lines already installed in there as well.
All right. Thank you.
Further comments? Councilman Hall.
Just, just for Councilman Edgar's and Denny's satisfaction, can we have Mr. Wauer come to maybe the next meeting when he is in town? Because, yeah, yeah, I realize that unless, I mean, we're, yeah, because we're not going to have another one, but at least he could answer the concerns that seem to be... I agree with them. I, I think it was better in the all purpose rooms. It was an easier access. I just can't help but feel like there's a pissing contest going on here that doesn't need to happen, you know?
It's the reason why I didn't comment. I don't want to get into an argument.
So, you know, I'd like to hear the rationale from him personally in front of us explaining why.
We used those all purpose rooms in the past, long before we had gymnasiums. We had machines that took up space. Now we have little compact tables. And I understand that the fiber optics or whatever the case may be were installed now in those gymnasiums. But in the past, we always used those all purpose rooms. And then especially at Enfield Street School where you can walk in the front door from here to that back door, and you're in the voting place, not at Enfield Street School. And I, now I don't know, I didn't know that they were using those all purpose rooms while the voting was going on. And I didn't want to get into contests with him, but I've had this meeting with him, and it's not, in my own opinion, it's not conducive to older people walking in those gymnasiums and parking cars, not only at Enfield Street School, but at Henry Barnard. Thank you.
Councilman Edgar.
Question. Why was this reason not given up before? Nobody has said anything about all purpose rooms, and he doesn't say anything in his letter that was just read, read to us. How come we suddenly got to get this from the mayor, and we weren't aware of this argument?
If I may? Go ahead, Phil. I called Dave today and asked him for a little bit more information about it because I knew it was outstanding from last week. What, what he explained to me was the primary reason, which I think is what he's attempting to convey in, in the memo, is that the distance between the parking area to the gymnasium is a shorter distance than the parking area to the multipurpose room. And when they proposed their changes to the Secretary of State, the first rule that they were to follow was to make it as close as possible. Secondarily, there is this thing with ERFC apparently in the NPR. But what, what they told me was when they redesigned their polling places, the criteria that they were to deal with first was distance and proximity. And that's at least what he's explaining to me is, is why they've maintained this the way that it was planned.
Question then, are they doing a lot of parking on a circle now in back of Enfield Street?
Are they allowing parking on the circle?
They'll have to to do what you're saying.
I know that, and Matt, if you know more, because your conversation is probably newer, but I know that they were looking to add some lighting, auxiliary lighting at least, and adding a whole additional set of handicap parking spaces.
My point is, if this was all part of the reason, why didn't it come out right away instead of now? We might have looked at it a little different.
What, what he was at least attempting to convey was that they're following the secretary's guidelines.
Councilman Sikala.
Thank you. I don't want to speak for ERFC, but I'm going to. They are always fantastic about moving to other areas of the school using classrooms and the gymnasiums and the art room and wherever else we need if other people in Enfield Street need the all purpose room. So I don't really, that is a secondary argument according to this. I don't buy it because they are fantastic about moving. That's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. Any further questions? My only question is, you know, it's, and guys, don't take this the wrong way, but sometimes we try to champion things because, oh my God, we're, we're restricting voting rights, and no one wants to do that. But in the end, is it a council decision? Or is it the registrar voter's decision? You know, Dave Wauer has stepped up. You know, we have two registrar voters in town, but we really don't. We have one person running these elections. And, you know, let the truth be known, you know, right now, and I'm sure that's going to get corrected on Election Day, but we have one registrar running and trying to put everything together. And he's the guy that authored that memo that everyone's starting to beat up on and say, oh, let's bring him to a council meeting so we can question him. So, you know, I think we're at the point now, we're two weeks away from an election. You know, and, and probably every council member I know, I, Henry Barnard is a disaster. I mean, we saw it in action a year ago. So hopefully with change, they can work, you know, the registrars will work for the next election. You know, to Matt, to, to, as much as the town can assist the voting process at Barnard and Enfield Street with lighting, with parking, with signage, just so that we're not accused of, you know, trying to hold down certain populations from vote, voting, because that's a bunch of, Councilman Hall said pissing match, that's a bunch of bullshit. No one here wants to hold down, no, no, no one here wants to hold...
Good night, everybody. Good to see you.
No, no one here wants to hold down people from voting, so... Yeah, it's, Michael has tweeted it out already. Oh, is it? Really?
Oh, we have.
Whoever said it first? All right. So, you know, we could have Mr. Wauer and, and the Democratic registrar voters, you know, after Election Day come. And, but really, they should be the ones mapping out the changes to it and then coming to the town to say, this is the reason why. I don't know if council is the appropriate body to question them or not. I, I really don't know. So, let's see how the election goes. Let's, as a town, let's support the process as much as we can with signage, lighting, flagmen waving people into certain places. However, voters are creatures of habit. Everyone hates a change. How many times do you, when, when your polling place changed, how many complaints do you get about that? And how many people, even though they receive 5,000 cards, still go to the place where they voted the last 20 years? It's just, that's what people are used to doing. So, um, so let's see what happens on, on Election Day with the registrar's race. And I apologize for my BS comment. But it, but if you had a running bet that you owe me a drink, I will gladly take another bottle of water after this meeting. Councilman Sikala.
I agree with a lot of what you said, and as a side note, it wasn't that word that we were having, we had the bet on, so the bet is still on. Like I said, I agree with a lot.
What was the word?
Well, we haven't decided who wins, if the winner gets the drink or buys the drink, so we'll have to deal with that. As an aside, I, like I said, Scott, I agree with a lot of what you said, but I, I'm not really sure it's appropriate to slam any registrar voter, so that's all.
Councilman Bosco.
It's nice someone else pulled a Joe.
Yeah. Anyone else? Okay. Anything else, Matt?
I am done.
So there's one, one thing, Matt, that you didn't mention, that I failed to mention, but you sent out a nice email today, and I thought this is worthy of mentioning. But we did get an email from our Director of Public Safety that last week, the Department, Department of Public Safety was awarded Best Overall Impaired Driving Enforcement Program in 2013 in the state of Connecticut. This was part of the Connecticut Law Enforcement Challenge sponsored by the Connecticut Chiefs of Police Association in conjunction with the State of Connecticut DOT. Certainly reflects the Enfield Police Department's commitment and dedication to keeping the roads safe for our citizens, so...
I just want to make it clear, it's not that our employees are driving impaired.
Correct. It's preventing others from driving impaired. So congratulations to an honor well deserved because we do see them out there with their roadblocks and things such as that, so good job.
I just got a text that you owe $10 to the swear jar for the food shelf.
Oh, I do? $10 to the swear jar? Okay. I didn't know that was a swear.
It is now.
Okay. Councilman Denny.
Matt, one, one other thing, and it's been on my mind, I guess, a couple of council meetings, and I forgot about it. Downtown, across from the police station, or the fire station, the old fire station, and across from...
Is that a Freudian slip?
Yeah, the new one or the other one. Oh, no. I didn't do that on purpose. Across from Corona's Market, the parking lot, are they going to clean that? I, I know they use that parking lot for doing Prospect Street, but there are, there's heavy equipment there and still piles of dirt have been sitting. I don't know if that's cleaned up or not.
Our lot, or is that on the private lot?
It looks like it's on the private lot. I'm, I'm not positive, but it's...
So, yeah, they, I mean, the, we'll, we'll see what we can do to make sure that happens, but... Yeah, they, yeah. And I'm not sure if that was our, our contractors or if it was one of the other utilities that were, were operating down there. I'm just not sure of that, but we can, we can, you know, obviously, if they leave in the condition that becomes blighted, we have enforcement opportunities there, but we'll, we'll check to see what's going on there.
Any questions for the town, Councilman Edgar?
Yes. Can you manage or address the lighting issue downtown? I also understand that one of them, construction people, took down one of the poles, and I'm not sure if they've replaced it yet with the lights on it.
In Thompsonville?
Yep.
I'm not aware of that. I, I have not had an opportunity to sit down with buildings and grounds, and, and I had asked you if it was an issue that there were lights out or if it's just that it's not sufficient brightness.
It's not sufficient. It's been coming up, coming up for years, and it actually, it's worse now than it was.
Okay. So what we're talking about is replacement of, of the light fixtures themselves. That was, you know, a second part of what we're looking at for the Thompsonville Initiative, to actually change those from the, the type they are now to an LED like we're putting in other parts of the town. I want to say that was about a $17,000 expenditure, so we're looking at that.
All right. Is there a timeframe?
Again, I just, I have not had an opportunity since we spoke on Wednesday to take care of that.
Any further questions for the manager? All right. Town Attorney's Report and Communication, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I covered most of my stuff in the executive session tonight, so unless there's particular questions, I'll keep it short.
Questions for the town attorney?
I did. I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. Reports of special committees of the council, Enfield High School Renovation Building Committee, Donna Argina. Anything?
So we had a meeting last week. Let me pull up my notes. Big news is, we got the bids in for everything except electrical, which is going to be a massive bid, and security. And the good news is, the bids have been coming in lower than we expected. So we are a little under budget, which is great thus far. Things are going well. Almost on the concrete. I think they're about a week ahead of schedule for that. 35% of the structural steel has been done on the Fermi wing. Building permits have been submitted, and I have sent them an email to see if and when they want to come and do sort of a little update for us.
Great.
On, on that, just to let you know, I spoke with Randy Dagel, who's the chair, and offered both the 10th and the 17th, and he was going to get back to me.
Perfect.
Donna, anything?
Well, I think there's, there's going to be a steel topping off, and that projected is to be around, is the 11th, 11-12, I should say, November 12th, rain date, the 13th. That's, no ceremonies, no anything, but I guess they're supposed to have a steel beam, the one that will be the last one to go up down there for people who would like to go down and sign. This is my understanding. Gina, do you have the same understanding as me?
The whole town of Enfield can go down. No, I'm just kidding.
Right. Anybody who would like to go down there with a Sharpie can go down and sign the beam for topping off, right?
I have no idea. I think they were going to include the kids and some of the building committee members, but I have no idea other than that.
Right.
Yeah, wear long pants.
No, they're...
Wear long pants.
They're going to put it up to the...
No shorts, no open-toed shoes.
They're going to put it up to the fence, so nobody has to go into the construction zone to do so. So everybody will be safe.
That's pretty exciting.
Very good. Any other reports of special committees of the council? Councilman Mangini.
Thank you. Yes, we had a CCM Legislative Committee meeting Thursday. We had a speaker, Connecticut Mirror Capital reporter Keith Van Nuuf, gave a brief update on his 2015 legislative forecast, which is dim and bleak not to, you know, make a pun of it, but it doesn't look too great. We also have some information on the DEP draft MS4 permit, which I forwarded to Matt. This has to do with stormwater drainage discharge. They're looking for all municipalities to participate in the survey. Matt, I hope you got it by email. I sent it to you. The DEP has proposed regulating all municipalities using a two-tiered permit program, which can impose significantly costly unfunded, unrealistic mandates. And when I see something like that, I get, you know, very concerned, and that's where our town needs to jump in, make sure we're not going to be imposed upon any more than we already are by the state. We did have several committee reports, actions that we're going to take on the legislative level, and I'm just going to give a brief overview. The first one's on education. We're looking to ask for relief from special ed mandates, MBR burden of proof, and to alleviate the MBR by reflecting the actual costs and changing the cost in the district that it is generated from. On the municipal law liability insurance, to provide the relief to municipalities from unfunded mandates by modifying requirements for posting legal notices in newspapers, to allow municipalities to publish summary of notices on their website, allowing operating costs, including rent and office supplies of probate courts, to come from the state probate fees, which, you know, could help the municipalities. An active constitution amendment or statutory prohibition to prohibit the passage of unfunded or underfunded state mandates without a two-thirds vote of both the chambers of the General Assembly, and to eliminate the state tax and municipal health insurance premiums. For public safety, crime prevention, we're looking at providing municipalities with state resources and incentives to regionalize emergency services, amend current state statute regarding resident state trooper programs, which primarily pertains to those towns that share, eliminating the requirement that the host municipality pay for the fringe benefit costs directly associated with the resident state trooper. Examine the current cost allocation of the resident state trooper program, which would include the costs of municipalities that are required to pay, and to provide local emergency services with adequate crisis management resources. We also had a report on public health and human services. They're looking to propose an investment in mental health with an emphasis on youth mental health and substance abuse programs. And one of the amendments that I offered was suicide prevention because I know that right here in Enfield, we have that program, and, you know, it fortunately is working out to be very successful. So we're going to push that forward. Enhancing social service delivery by addressing current infrastructure issues at the Department of Social Services. There's a problem we all know when people are trying to get on that hotline. It takes forever and a day to make contact with who they need to. We're going to try and eliminate that issue through a service hotline to help those that are eligible get through the process quicker. And then finally, we talked about the transportation infrastructure, investing additional funding for programs such as the local bridge program. TAR and LoSIP are included in this plan. Prioritize state funding for improvements and expansion of rail, passenger and freight, infrastructure operations and management, which should help us out with our plan going forward. forward. Act red tape reduction legislation to address the chronic gridlock within the state agencies such as DEP, DOT, and DECD, to help jumpstart some of the local projects which have been stalled for unknown periods of time. So, that's a very brief overview of the legislative proposals, and as we progress through the year, there'll be obviously more issues that come up and more, you know, unfunded mandates that we can battle. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Any other reports of special committees of the council? Sensing none, we'll move on to old business. Appointments Town Council Appointed Items 1 through 12 remain on the table. B Appointments Town Manager Appointed Counsel Approved. Is there a motion to remove item 10 from the table? Moved by Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilman Suzak, seconded by... Is it Councilman Bosco? By show of hands, all those in favor removing the item from the table. Those opposed, item's been removed from the table. Matt?
Yes, I am recommending the appointment of Robert Shagnon as the alternate to Inland-Wetlands Water Course.
Is there a motion to accept the manager's recommendation by Councilman Hall, seconded by Councilman Stokes? Any discussion? Sensing none, by show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed, any abstentions? Then items C, D, E, and F remain on the table. Okay, we move to new business. An all-new business remains on the table. Items for discussion? The Appointments Town Council Appointed remain on the table. You know what, Bill? You know what you didn't do?
Didn't do miscellaneous.
I didn't have a memo.
Oh, there's a memo. You didn't catch the memo? There you go.
Came in late.
There you go.
Oh, look at that.
You didn't get the memo.
I did not get the memo. Appropriate to do this now?
Yes.
Is it appropriate to do this now? All right. I'd like to make a motion and suspend the rules, and move the following items to miscellaneous, and potentially proceed to vote, and those items are D and E to miscellaneous.
So, motion by Deputy Mayor Lee, seconded by Councilman Hall to move those items to miscellaneous. By show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed, any abstentions? Unanimous. So, the Appointments Town Council remain on the table. There's no appointments by the manager. We do have item F first, discussion Higgins Park on the green.
So, as this comes up, I know in your package, you have the conceptual colorized version of what's been worked on at the committee level with the Leisure Services Committee as well as staff, and there's a lot of moving parts to this. And I always hate throwing these things out before I can get into all the moving parts, because I know there's probably a lot of questions that starts getting generated with this. But starting maybe from the beginning with this, as council's aware, we made the decision to tear down the Higgins School, and as part of that decision, we had some preliminary discussions amongst all of council at the time, what would replace it? At that point in time, there was discussions or alternatives where it was a very active parkland, is what I'd call it, where there'd be basketball courts, playgrounds, a lot of different things, but ultimately, and parking may add on that site as well. And during the course of discussions, at that point in time, council said, no, we don't want to go to the active route. We don't want basketball courts there. We don't want parking there. And, you know, when this comes down, staff start putting together some ideas. And so, with that in mind, as the building started to come down, we started reaching out to an engineering firm to come up with some different ideas. I believe we presented three different alternatives, very passive in scope, to the Leisure Services Committee. And one of the things that came back with that, and it was actually something when we met with the engineer, landscape engineer on, you know, the site, I originally thought that the ball field and the skate park were off the table. They had to stay there. Interesting, as we started talking about it with the Leisure Services Committee, that was kind of thrown into doubt whether, in fact, those needed to stay there or not. And so, the three original designs did have the baseball field as well as the skate park. The engineer, the first thing they said is that those are really incompatible uses to what you're trying to do with this area. And so, it's difficult to do all those things. Again, designs were there to do that, but they really weren't compatible and didn't give the area the 100% of the more passive usage that I think people were looking at. So, we went back, and I said to the engineer, you're right. Now come back with a design that not only did away with those two elements, but also would allow for some of the things that currently happen there, and primarily 4th of July and events like that that occur on the green, as well as to accommodate the fireworks, because, you know, that's one of the issues we have on an annual basis, that we have to go through, you know, limiting the access of the area. And this design would set up a perimeter from the very beginning that we could keep people away from and still allow the fireworks to go. One of the things that was talked about with the subcommittee was the ability to use this for a multitude of purposes. And so, that started lending it less grade and more flat area, and it came up then with this design, which creates kind of a natural amphitheater. And just to give you an indication, from the lowest point, which is this area right here, to say up to where the walkway is, we're talking really about 12 to 15 feet of grade difference. And it's designed such that it's a gentle slope down to the flat area, and in the flat area, you'll be able to do picnics. You could put a stage there if you'd want to, a temporary stage for different events, as well as frisbee, playing catch, you know, kind of those things that came up during the discussions with Leisure Services that they wanted to see. Now, as with any plan, there's elements that have to get into place to be able to do that. We couldn't do what's on this plan tomorrow, but we could start working towards those elements, and some of those are already in place. For instance, we're already starting to work on the skate park options for out, off of Taylor Road, in the Green Manor area. And so, you know, rather than having two, you know, half skate parks, the thought being already, you know, maybe we have one location where we spend all our money and create a really terrific destination for that type of usage. The second element is the relocation of the field. And what we found during the discussions with our facilities, buildings, and grounds, is that, you know, that field is being used because there's lights, not because that's the only field, but that's the only field for women's softball and girls' softball that has lights. And so, you know, if we reinstall lights at another field, that solves that issue of not having lights at a field. Or look to Brainerd Park, where, you know, we already have that concept of building a third field there, but building a women's slash girls' field for softball at that site. Again, we have some money appropriated for looking in the skate park, looking at the skate park and doing there. You know, the understanding was, we were gonna have to appropriate more money in the coming budget as well. Again, with the ball field relocation, we'd have to talk about appropriating money for that, as well as appropriating ultimately money to do what a master plan gives us. So, I think, you know, this doesn't mean, if you like this plan, that tomorrow the skate park and the ball field go away. That means now we as staff have to start putting together the implementation program and show you what the cost is and how we're gonna fund that. So, today is just a discussion of what you see and your comments.
Councilman Bosco, Councilman Denny?
I don't mind the plan. The only thing I don't like are them little spurs that are going off into the woods that really don't connect anything. I'd be worried about, you know, people congregating down there and not be able to see them, you know, kids causing trouble into the little wooded areas with them little arrows. I mean, the one to the north behind the fire department, where it goes into that little field, that's fine, because you can keep an eye on them, but when you go to the ones next to it, the one right behind the town hall, and the one behind Santa Dalbert's, I think that it could cause a problem for kids to congregate and not be able to see them.
Yeah, and I think, you know, with those that are coming off the main, I guess, oval of the walking trail, I think those are possible in the future, just showing where it could go. You know, obviously, the one to the north going into private property, you know, we don't have access into that. So, you know, again, that's thinking that maybe in the future that something could be done, you know, create a walkway between our parcel and, you know, that area, but again, not necessarily what we'd be doing.
What do you plan? Use it for a walking surface? Or you haven't got that far yet?
Really, I haven't got that far. I think, you know, obviously, we could go with a formalized, you know, asphalt, or it could be a stone dust. But again, the concept doesn't say what that will be yet, it's just an idea for, in terms of a walking trail there.
All set, Joe? Councilman Denny?
Well, it looks good, but, and I'd be in favor of it, but for two reasons. Number one, you know, in Thompsonville, you have Lafayette Park and Alcorn, and that's about all the recreational facilities you have. So, you're eliminating the skate park, or we're trying to revitalize, and it's a nice plan, but what's the plan for the kids and so forth to skateboard? I mean, they're not gonna go from Thompsonville out to Green Manorville to skateboard. I like the idea of moving and putting another ball field at Brainerd Park, but at the moment, we're still in the process of trying to finish a basketball court there. And, you know, I don't know what the cost situation is, but I wouldn't want to abandon that immediately, because there is no girls' softball situation. My main concern is that I don't want to eliminate things in Thompsonville where we need some type of recreational facility. I know they, you know, there's a lot of kids that can't really go down to Enfield High and use some of those fields because of the schools and the turf and so forth and so on, so, you know, and somehow, we have to have a plan besides Lafayette Park and whatever for recreational, some type of recreational facilities here in the downtown Thompsonville.
Thanks, Ed. Deputy Mayor Lee?
Is there an estimate of the difference in the elevation between the top and the bottom of the bowl?
Yeah, they stated earlier, it's about a 10, I'll tell you, I think I said 12 to 15, but it's probably 10 to 15 feet, somewhere in that range.
Councilman Mangini?
Thank you. I have to agree with Councilman Denny. I think that, you know, this piece, this park, is a part of the fabric of Thompsonville, part of the history, part of, you know, the old days where everyone, you know, got out there and just played informal baseball or football or what have you, and I really would hate to see that go, especially since we don't have, in Brainerd Park, the opportunity already set up. So, I would be concerned about that. Thank you.
Councilman Edgar?
Well, as long as I can remember, there's been a ball field there. And before I want to take a ball field out of there, I want to see what the other plan is. And I go along, there's no recreation downtown except here. They come down here to play ball. They don't go to the schools. And that field has been used by the girls almost exclusively, and it's great. And it looks good and everything, but I have a problem taking that field out of there.
Further comment? Councilman Hall?
I like the concept. I am leaning towards Councilman Denny's comments and Councilman Edgar's. I'd like to see the plans to replace what they're taking away. Conceptually, it's a beautiful plan, and I guess I would have to be convinced that the kids from Thompsonville would have the opportunity to use a park on the other side of town. The concept, I mean, I know we have the bus that runs around town, which they could hop on, but at the same time, I think a good point is made, there's not a lot in Thompsonville, and I know that park was used quite a bit. So, I'd like to see the replacement plan before I would agree to this, but that's where I'm coming from.
Councilman Suzak?
When this was brought before leisure, I was under the understanding that the girls' softball team had already been spoken with and addressed this and was willing to move to Brainerd Park.
No, I don't think we made that statement.
Well, I thought there was a... I must be...
I think one of the members of the committee had...
Okay. Tom, Arnon, Tom's not here.
Had made some comments that...
Reached out to them.
That's, yeah.
Okay. All right, so...
And Tom, you know, obviously, was a part of the whole discussion, and I know he wanted to be here, but obviously for other reasons. And so, I had told him, when I communicated with early today, that this is just the preliminary part, not any decisions to be made, so.
Well, also, I'm under the understanding that when we have the transit center, we'll have some more passive and active recreation down near the river.
Passive, more passive.
More passive than active, but I think sometimes, as a community, we have to start changing, that we spend so much of our time stagnating and staying in how we've always done it, that we don't search for ways that we might do it better. So, I think this is, for me, part of how I can see the town green becoming more of a green for the types of entertainment and recreation that the town may want to develop.
Further comment?
So, as one of the members of the Leisure Subcommittee, you know, I think all of our feelings is that this is a plan for the green, but what is there currently needs to be replaced, and it needs to be, and in the case where, like the skate park, needs to be replaced locally, say, within the neighborhood. As Donna had mentioned, the softball field, what we were told by Councilman Arnoni, and don't want to put words in his mouth, but we can ask him at the next meeting, but he was very, very sure that all along, girls' softball has wanted to move to Brainerd, and that we have looked at Brainerd, and there is available land within Brainerd to build a softball field. So, it'd be a replacement of getting, having Brainerd become the softball park for both men and women, lighted field, so that it's not that the women's games could only be during daylight, so it'd be replacing what is at Higgins at Brainerd. And that's, to me, that's the only why I'd support this as well, because you can't rob Peter to play Paul or...
Play Paul.
Well said. So, and then on the skate... So, and then on the skate, on the skate park, you know, whether that's the right amenity or the right recreation, I don't know. You know, are skate parks the, still the rave that is there, or is there something else that can replace it that meets the needs of the kids in the neighborhood? So, and where is the appropriate location? If we're going to spend money here, I envision us spending money elsewhere locally to replace and to improve. I do like the concept of, if we truly want to make it a green, it should be open, open space for all sorts of activities, and really, on the ball field, you're limited to baseball and softball. So where do we go from here, though, Matt? So you've got, can you come up with and present back to council or present back to leisure? You know, what would the cost be to replace the Higgins women's softball field to another location, and where, and what are the costs? Relocate the skate park, or an additional amenity, recreational opportunity within Thompsonville? And is there, is there a pocket park or a neighborhood park in Thompsonville that needs to be spruced up, and that becomes, if there's a ball field there, that we're looking for an opportunity for the kids to, you know, to play pickup games? Where could that be within, within the neighborhood?
There's a lot there. I-
Is it ever easy?
Never is, but things worth doing generally are never easy. So I think, you know, the next step, and again, to let this percolate and come up with other ideas as well. I mean, I think this isn't the only possibility, but this is the one that we've worked on to address a lot of the things that previous councils, that when we started talking about the demolition of Higgins, you know, addressed what those, those thought processes were. You know, obviously, with the skate park and the ball field, that's a little bit different than, than what we talked about. But again, even those designs had some significant changes as well. But I think, you know, the go forward would be to get any more comments about this. You know, obviously, this doesn't happen without council voting money to make it happen. So I think, you know, we're not in danger of, you know, you waking up one day and walking out there and seeing the ball field's gone and all that. So we would, if, if there's at least some consensus that what you see is good, but bring us back the other pieces, because as I said, there's a number of moving pieces with us. If, if, you know, there is no way to change your mind, that, you know, there has to be a ball field there, then it doesn't make a lot of sense to spin a lot of wheels trying to find other locations or what those costs are. So I guess, not making a decision, but saying, yep, we like what we see, would be a step that would get us then moving on those other pieces and spend staff time and resources to do that.
Like Gina?
I'm unsure where I stand on this. I like the idea of what you've presented, but I feel like maybe this should be more centrally located in downtown, if possible, if there is some open space that we can acquire down there to do this, closer to everything else we are trying to in the future revitalize, build, and things like that. I just, I worry that, I almost worry that this may be too, and I'm not, I understand it's not that far away, but a little too far away from where we're trying to build up everything else, if that makes sense. And I do agree with everybody else here. I think that if we're going to take down that, if we're going to replace the ball field that's there, we need to have a ball field somewhere downtown. So does it make sense to get rid of this one and then put another one in, or try to put this somewhere else, maybe closer to the water? I think Donna may have, maybe have hinted to that, because this would be really cool to have some sort of amphitheater-ish design near the water.
So, a lot of questions, again. You guys aren't just asking one question when you ask a question.
Half comments, half questions, I guess.
So, you know, in the bigger, the bigger, the grander scheme of things, you know, there's going to be the need to do a lot of things like this within the Thompsonville area to meet the goal of the revitalized area that we want. Now, you know, the discussion about a ball field in Thompsonville is, I think, needs to be discussed maybe differently than how you're framing it, because, you know, the field that's there right now is used only by the women's and the girls' program. That's a townwide program. And so, in removing that, you're not taking away an amenity that only the people in Thompsonville are using. Now, if the question is, should there be a ball field that can be used by the Little League or the, I mean, that's a different discussion in my mind that you need to have. Again, with the skate park, whether a skate park or another amenity to replace that is necessary is, again, a different discussion that I understand how you're looking at it in terms of this, because that's where the skate park is now. But again, I don't know if we were to take the time and poll all the residents that live in Thompsonville and say, what are your top five recreation needs? I don't know if a ball field is there or a soccer field's there. I don't know if it's, you know, you know, what, I guess I don't know and can't answer, what do the residents that live there want to see in terms of the recreational facilities? Maybe it's a basketball court. Maybe it's a tennis court, because again, when you look, we don't have those really in the Thompsonville area as well.
Maybe a good topic for the next Thompsonville talk.
Well, it's, it's one of the many, one of the many. But I think, again, that's a grander, bigger issue than just what, what we do with the green. You know, in the end, we have this area here, and, you know, I guess, A choice is we do nothing, just leave it like it is. That's one, one option. But again, when we talked with council way back when, you know, they wanted us to come forward at the end of the demolition with different ideas on what can be done there. And so that's where we're at, and why we're looking here at this site rather than another site in Thompsonville, because that was what, one of the charges we were given as part of the demolition was to come back with an option. But doing this doesn't mean that we can't do other things, because we will have to do other things in other parts, whether it's along the riverfront as part of that recapture, or greenways to connect to the riverfront from other parts of the town. I mean, we're going to have to do those things as well. And again, you know, doing this doesn't mean that we don't keep spending money around the pond, because we have, you know, plans to improve that area as well. But it's connecting all these that I think we have to keep in mind as, as a priority.
Good. Councilman Hall?
I think, I think Gina brings up a valid point that kind of you touched on, Matt. I think it's all encompassing for me, because you're asking for money to put this plan in place. And I think before you put something like this in place, maybe you do need to reach out to the residents of that area and find out what their recreational needs are, what they want to see replaced. Maybe it's not the skate park, maybe it's not the ball field. But for me, if you're taking amenities away, there's got to be a plan in place to replace those amenities, especially when we don't have a lot of them in Thompsonville. So for me, I would like to see either some sort of reach out, you know, to find out really what they want to see down there to replace those, or if they're happy with those two things and they want those replaced somewhere. For me, I want to see it as one plan. I don't want to say, well, you know, we'll do it later. It's, it's a different thought train. I want to see it as part of this, because before, personally, before I say, okay, I'm going to fund this, I want to know what else they're going to be looking for. So that's where I am.
Okay, I've got Donna, then Joey.
Actually, I did attend the Thompsonville talk, and the only one thing they asked for for recreation was a playscape, and this addresses that. That was really the only, you know, because that really, for me, was to go to that meeting to find out what do people want? What are they expecting Thompsonville to contain? And that was the one request, and this does have this. And I guess I like this plan, because this is actually a natural gradation of the soil. This is not a man-made amphitheater. It's how that land is. I, I don't know, I've felt over the years that, you know, we do need to expand our green. And I think it looks really nice when your town hall is, you know, surrounded by nice kind of unrecreationally developed spaces. And the ball field really, as everybody's saying, isn't something that's particularly used by Thompsonville residents. It's used by women's softball. And I guess Tom at the meeting brought up good points that if you have, you know, two parents or on teams, they could play at Brainerd Park. They have facilities there for kids and everything else, and it made it more centrally located rather than isolating the women's, you know, baseball to where it's always been. And I always find that we just, I don't know, we get in this because it's there, it needs to be there, and we don't look for better solutions and better ways to do what we always do. Thanks.
Thanks, Donna. Joey?
I agree that we need to find a location for the baseball fields or whatever's there, but what everyone keeps forgetting is, this isn't just Thompsonville. This is for Enfield. This is for every Enfield resident, not just a group of people. So this is something that's going to be pulling from all four districts, not just Thompsonville. So I, I agree, we need to, if we get rid of the, the baseball or softball field, that we need to find a place to put it. Maybe we can go into Lafayette Park or something like that. I don't know if there's room, but, you know, this is for the whole town of Enfield, not Thompsonville. And, you know, everyone keeps saying it's for Thompsonville, Thompsonville. Well, people from all over Enfield are going to come to that field. And this is the one thing that we got to remember. It's for the whole town, not just a certain area.
Thanks, Joey. Further comments?
If I could, Mr. Mayor, as you were talking, Derek had let me know that both he and Mary are recreation supervisor, right there. I don't know if you want to come forward and say anything, feel free. But they're, they're saying no. I think they want to end this. I think they've already started to look at what needs to be done at some of the other parks within the Thompsonville area. And again, I, I know the desire for the comprehensive piece of this, but I'm just saying that, that there are different issues. If, if all we're doing is replacing a skate park and a ball field, that's one thing, but when we're looking at the total recreation needs of an area, an impacted area, that's, that's a bigger, different process than, than something that, you know, is done overnight. You know, again, we understood that, that this is going to take place over a period of time, which would start with the next budget. You know, it may be that the only thing we can fit into a budget is a replacement of a ball field and not do this. But again, what we're trying to establish is what the master plan is, to then start working to achieve it.
I think it's a good first step, good discussion. It's only on the agenda for discussion, so we'll, it will be back on the agenda for the next meeting. Talk in, talk to your constituents, see what they feel, have some conversation, and we'll pick it up in three weeks. Good?
Motion to table?
Don't need to.
All right.
It moves. It will move to new business at the next meeting. All right. That completes new, and Matt, thank you for, for the presentation. We move to miscellaneous. We have two items under miscellaneous. The first is discussion resolution. Resolution amending the town code of Enfield Article II Cultural Arts Commission ordinance. Not yet, got to read it. Got to get there.
Okay.
Whereas Chapter 22, Article II of the town code establishes the Infocultural Arts Commission, and whereas the town council wishes to amend the ordinance to redefine the commission's purpose and responsibilities and increase its membership. And whereas a public hearing has been held in accordance with chap, with charter requirements on October 20, 2014, and whereas it has been determined this is in the best interest of the town of Enfield to make changes to Chapter 22, Article II. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council does hereby adopt the amended and revised Cultural Arts Commission ordinance, here to fore attached as Attachment A.
We'll move.
Moved by Councilman Mangini, seconded by Councilman Denny. Discussion. Sensing none? Roll call, please.
Mayor Copen?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Lee?
Four.
Councilman Mangini?
Four.
Councilman Stokes?
Four.
Councilman Suzak?
Four.
Councilman Bosco is out. Councilman Sicala?
Four.
Councilman Denny?
Four.
Councilman Edgar?
Four.
Councilman Hall?
Four.
Just nine in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Next item, discussion. Resolution. Resolution to authorize the town manager to enter into an agreement with Viewpoint Engineering Incorporated. Resolve that Matthew W. Koppeler, town manager, is empowered to execute and deliver in the name and on behalf of this municipality, a contract with the Viewpoint Engineering Incorporated.
So move.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Lee?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Mangini. Discussion. Any discussion? Ding. Sensing none?
Sorry.
Sensing none. Roll call, please.
Mayor Copen?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Lee?
Four.
Councilman Mangini?
Four.
Councilman Stokes?
Four.
Councilman Suzak?
Four.
Councilman Bosco?
Four.
Councilman Sicala?
Four.
Councilman Denny?
Four.
Councilman Edgar?
Four.
Councilman Hall?
Four.
Just ten in favor, none against, no abstentions.
That completes miscellaneous. Next item on the agenda is public communications. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? Sensing none? Councilman communications? Any councilman communications? Councilman Sicala?
Really quickly, and I apologize, I forgot to mention this earlier, and I don't have a heck of a lot of the details, but I believe today, the beautification committee did a dedication ceremony with the plaques on the planter boxes that they planted. I wasn't able to attend, I was at work, but just a kudos to the beautification committee for doing some really good work around town, and I hope it continues.
Awesome. Thank you, Gina. Deputy Mayor Lee?
Also, very quick, I, Matt, I think we've got a request in for the seventh for Development Services Subcommittee. Seven, November 7th at 4 o'clock is what we're toying with. I think we're just trying to sync up calendars, and I'll call you tomorrow to verify that.
Further councilman communications? Sensing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Hall, seconded by Councilman Mangini. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
We are, you can't vote twice. We are adjourned. Have a good night.